I don't want to work.
I haven't figured out how to do this. I haven't figured out how to block three because I was.
He'll know when you clear it up. I just realized keep them in my basement. Messing up your stuff. You have all these things coming into all the stuff. He'll think it's just. I don't have any. Like the greens. All these different.
Yeah, so you knew. So like I get. I had.
I didn't realize. Some other stuff like get them back down there. Make it right.
Good.
I have all these things.
Yes.
Well, so.
I'm just going to pass these ones off to the guys. They have to do it when they're talking. I did print it out that.
He's got a minor thing.
Couldn't bring myself to just chop them off. I know all of them.
It would have to be. Speaker.
Okay. This is the. This is the stormwater.
Oh, hi.
That's not. Yeah, that's fine. That's okay.
I know. It's all welcome. It's all welcome. I think.
It would have been earlier, but I.
They have a lot more.
Go to your chat.
Yes. Yeah.
I went for a Cleveland baseball.
Yeah. Well, I'm really having a. None. Okay, yeah. Thank you. Try to call the library. This thing here is all the wrong.
I'd like to call the order of the Massletony Planning Commission meeting for December 20th. If we get a roll call.
Sure. Mr. Westbrook?
Here.
Mr. Schimone?
Here.
Mr. Pax?
Here.
Mr. Wallenworth?
Here.
All right, first is approval of the November 15th meeting minutes. Any comments? Make a motion.
No objection.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. First up is IHOP signage. Some here.
So, everybody's favorite subject signage. Full disclosure, I am project manager with Archer and kind of filling in for the individual that had been taken off this project. So she had to be removed off of it for her issues. As I understand it, what she submitted needed to be adjusted originally. So I brought a set of copies for what was changed on. I don't know. I haven't much time to talk to her. I don't know what everybody has on the submittal for this. I have copies here for what.
Is there a date? It looks like our revision date.
Yeah, so the latest revision was 12, which is. It's how.
And that might be addressing comments. I forgot.
Correct.
Okay.
One of those was definitely tabled and adjusted. The other one, and really me being here, if this is something that we have to come back, next mission meeting is on the 11th, make some adjustments, then fair enough. But I figured at least it'd be worth it. If you're sure you guys will have them, let's see what.
Let's pass those out.
Okay.
I think the issues were pretty minor. If it's too major.
Yeah. Brian, I apologize. You were supposed to see those after the initial interaction.
It's okay. Yeah.
Chris, if you want to go over your comments and then we can look through it to see if they.
Yeah, Matt. Last name is Burbeck. That's B as in Victor, E R. B as in Bravo. E C.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just real quick initially, I see that they revised the ground sign.
Yes, sir.
To be right at 40 square feet. That was one of the comments in my report. So. So if you just skimmed down to my items to consider, that was the first item. So that appears to be resolved.
Yep.
But the request is for some signage at 613 East Aurora Road in connection with the new IHOP. The applicant is proposing to utilize, reuse the existing brick base from the previous sign. You see the picture of it in the applicant's submittal. And so they're effectively going to put a new sign on that, on the existing brick base. And that will require landscaping around the brick base. So I don't see that in the submittal, but it will require landscaping around the monument. And then there's a couple of signs proposed on the. On the, I think it's the west elevation. There's two signs. It's like a wall art as well as a sign on the top, sort of parapet wall at the top of the building. I still see that's on your current submittal.
Yes.
And I note that you appear to be using canes as the example.
I don't know what, and I don't mean to interrupt Joe Allen, but this came from IHOP themselves and we've been sub for this. I'm not sure why they necessarily did that. I haven't been in communication with them. I know that I wouldn't have done that.
It's okay that you did. I think canes received a variance.
Yes.
And so the way our code reads, you can't have two signs on the same facade, which is still what's presented.
Correct.
So you'll have to deal with that some way. You can seek a variance or you can remove one of the two signs.
Okay.
The only thing I added or noted in my report in addition to that is that, and the cane sign is a good example, actually, they have the wall art and noted in your picture you submitted.
Yes.
And you'll notice in their wall art that they limit it to basically their message.
Yep.
As opposed to what you're proposing, which is there's a significant amount of.
Blue sticks.
Of blue on both sides. So my comment was reduce that blue.
Sure.
It's not necessary and it's not connected with the sign.
Yep.
And so, but to do two signs on one facade, you'll need to seek a variance or again reduce it.
Sure.
The monument sign appears to be addressed. And so that's really, that's really it. And then there was no additional signage on the north and east elevation. Does that remain the same?
No, so there is, so that's kind of, and going through the variances where we'll obviously probably end up going with this. And I guess the point for me coming up here was kind of just propose what we were looking at doing and then seeing just general thought from the group here on whether or not we have a chance of going through the variance. So the west elevation, which is the one that you're looking at here, will reduce this larger blue sign by 25% on the outside and then reducing that, shrinking that in. The, I want to see, the north elevation, which is the rear of the building, has no signage on it. So we were hoping if we removed a piece of signage from it, and I would submit drawings showing that, if we were to reduce this by 25%, remove a sign face from the rear, having one on the east side, one on the south end, and then these two with the reduced size, if that would give us a standing chance at the variance. But that's where we're, that's where I'm going to push this thing once I get back in the saddle in Canton and start to work with them.
So two issues for the commission's sake. They can't opine on whether.
Sure.
The Borisoni appeals will look favorably upon that. It's a dimensional variance. You have a practical difficulty standard you need to demonstrate in your application. Now, that's one issue. And then two, what I think you're describing really, I'd recommend to the commission that we continue this to maybe their January or February, whatever the meeting is that works out to be, because it sounds like you're not entirely sure which avenue you want to take it. And so they can't really approve it kind of on an if come basis.
Sure.
If it was just the monument sign, I think you're cleared up there. But it sounds like we have this other, these other issues you need to kind of.
There's no doubt about it.
Yeah, speak to.
Yeah.
That'd be my recommendation.
Yeah. You know, for me ultimately coming up here at least trying to get a feel for the situation, not working with the project until at this point. So I totally understand that. I need to do some corrections here with the drawings and include some other items. As far as getting back on the schedule for the January 11th, what do I need to do in order to make sure? I know that we submitted what we have up to this point. I know the deadline for that 11th is the 18th, which is already past. So am I able to still slide into that January?
Yeah. Again, are you going to apply for a variance?
That's probably the way that it's going to go.
Then, yeah, then I don't know that you'd get back before this commission, before that variance would be granted.
Okay. So would I come back then at, how would that work then if we were going to apply for the variance?
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and call me tomorrow rather than burden these.
Sure.
Everybody else here would do without timeframes. My phone number is 330-468-8362. And I'm Robert Broddick. I'm the building official.
Okay. Well, I appreciate the time you guys have given me so far. So I'll get some stuff here and I will get some things collected and then I will contact you tomorrow.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would continue it until the January, well, it sounds like I would continue it to the February meeting. They're not going to meet it, but it's probably safest to continue it to the January meeting. And then the January meeting will just recontinue it. And it's at the applicant's request to determine their course of action.
Okay. Make a motion to that effect. Continue it to the January meeting?
Yep.
I'll second that.
Mr. Westbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Schimone?
Yes.
Mr. Pax?
Yes.
Mr. Wallenworth?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Next is Peak Nano. Have you seen him? Good. What's your name for Susan?
Kevin Hanks with HSB Architects. Hanks is H E N G S T.
Why don't you give us a brief overview of what's been told.
Hi. The overview, Peak Nano is a recent newer tenant at 8190 Roland Hole Parkway. And their initial, initially they moved in about a year ago with sort of a pilot program to start some small production work there. And they've since slowly grown into the whole facility. And they now they need more parking associated with their newest expansion event. And I think we submitted a letter summarizing the current parking situation where Tatschi Fuji films has seven employees, each each steel. The other tenant there has five and Peak Nano will now have a total of 38 employees outside. So that's a total of 50. And only about 42 spots right now. So we want to get 20 spots to increase the total parking to 62. You know, if we pull back strong. Sufficient visitors, any overflow. And a preliminary plan showing how we would add those parking spaces along the existing access drive. And if you guys feel that's appropriate, we will proceed with more engineer drawings and stormwater management. From a. Instruct in the spring.
Chris, comments?
Sure. My report dated December 5th. The applicant did a nice job summarizing the project. It's about 4,000 square feet of additional paving, removing some green space to accommodate the 20 additional employee parking spaces. Love that you guys are growing. Great for the city, great for the company. And it's really a pretty straightforward application. It is removing a small amount of green space. So just my comment was really more to the city engineer and the need to just confirm that stormwater management is accommodated. It's a small amount of green space, but there was a larger project previously and just wanted to make sure that this doesn't trigger any issue for the stormwater as it relates to the project site. I felt that this was enough for a final plan approval and not to bring the applicant back, but that's up to the commission. I feel that it's pretty straightforward. It's parking, it's going to remove a little bit of green space as long as the city engineer confirms the stormwater management. It meets all the step back and other requirements of the code.
Yeah, thanks, Chairman. It's obviously a relatively small project in size. We have had some similar instances or requests from applicants in the past. And what we've done is, is ask for some type of either a soft stormwater feature like a rain garden or something along those lines, or potentially adding just a little bit of storage capacity to the existing detention pond. So if the applicant is comfortable with agreeing to provide some sort of stormwater feature on the site, I think the planning commission can give an approval this evening.
Yes, that would be our final civil engineering drawing. We'll try to source, file some of that. In addition to confirming the size of the existing pipes there and the adequacy of the existing retention basin, we'll give you all those counts. At that time, if this is acceptable. The paper.
No comments.
No, lots of.
Any questions? Easy one. All right, well, yeah, as long as you're willing to do that. I'd make a motion to approve with the caveat of some form of stormwater feature being added. Approved administratively. All right, second. Any more discussion? All right, Susan.
Mr. Westbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Schimone?
Yes.
Mr. Pax?
Yes.
Mr. Wallenworth?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, next is Gateway Plaza.
You guys had such drawings already?
Yeah, I think we have. Pretty here around.
These are most currently last December 15th. That's what I had.
So this came before you guys once already. We'll give you some planning comments regarding elevations. See if we can stop to address those.
Page 7A and 7B were kind of the direct response to a lot of the comments that we had when we did the last one. Trying to fit it in more to the gable look, using the materials that were more appealing to the city, trying to anchor the corner. There was the commentary about trying to anchor the corner with some sort of a tower feature or possibly another way of anchoring that corner to give it a little bit more of that backfield interest of achieving over there. And so we worked with our, currently we have our lease signed with Burlington. We're in negotiations with some other guys. This was, this was kind of that middle ground. Actually, this was actually what we were really trying to hope for is to get a response to your comments that met our national clients criteria that they could live with, even though it varies quite a bit from both.
Okay. Well, yeah, so these, we just got ahold of these today, the commission. But I know, Mr. France, I know you.
No, you didn't. No, did we just get these things? No, these are the ones we got Wednesday or something like that.
Okay. I'm getting confused. But Chris, I don't know if you want to go over your new comments?
Sure. Actually, these continue to be my, from my December 4th report. And so, and they did not address the revisions, but I have some comments on the revisions. And I did speak with Pam Schultz. So we're both on the same page from the perspective of the consultant's recommendation on the overall design. So I'll just go to my December 4th report. The rear elevation, at one point we talked in the last meeting about the sign that was on there. It's now, and that was for Burlington. It's shown as being demolished and then a future tenant sign will go in at some point. That, of course, will have to come as a separate request to the planning commission, which is, I think, acknowledged by the applicant.
Yeah.
At the last meeting, some lighting and landscaping details were submitted at the meeting. So that I just think needs to be as part of a complete submittal with lighting and landscaping. My version I had didn't have them in it.
Who's writing this up?
In the re-submittal?
Yes.
Yeah. So let me, let me just go through this and then we'll, I'll fast forward quickly. I don't think that's a significant issue that we can't work through and would ultimately, I'm recommending as long as we land on a final architectural design tonight, that the commission approve it subject to a final administrative compliance check of the full submittal package. So then my, the rest of my report then sort of focuses on the elevations. And this was pre the new submittal. So with that said, I will, I will make a comment about the vast amount of ephesus that was removed. That's appreciated and fits in much better into the town center district. It's replaced with a horizontal grooved cement panel, I think, which is a much nicer addition to than what was previously provided. And there's only a small amount of ephesus that remains sort of on the cornice treatments. And then the, the only remaining issue then, the wood panels at least on the previous version, still, they were removed and a cast stone veneer was put in to sort of simulate what Burlington's national standard is, which is that the wood panels.
It's a ceramic tile, a wooden primed ceramic tile.
Right. And so now it's a cast stone veneer?
Yeah.
Yeah. And so that's just something that the commission needs to confirm. The Burlington symbol still remains. That is something that will have to be tackled. It's the same issue we just previously heard with IHOP, two signs, same elevation. If that's something they want, they'll have to seek a variance for that. I would encourage them to just have their sign on the front and not go for that because I come from the school of thought of 95% of all variances should be denied because they don't meet the practical difficulty test. But that's entirely up to you. It's a separate board and it goes to the Borisoni appeals.
Okay.
So finally, then we get to the issue of the revised treatments. And so both Pam and I agree to this, that if, if, we think the building should be treated completely together. So you have two tenants to, to the, to the east. That's Petco and. Office Max. That if you're not doing anything to those two facades, meaning if you're not gabling those, then you shouldn't gable the other tenant spaces, leave Burlington flat. We're both of the opinion that you should just leave them all flat, like you're proposing with Burlington, and just do the Route 8. And we love what's going on on the Route 8 side. And do that and do it now. Save your money on the other gables that you'll do and make them flat and keep consistently consistency for the entire development. So they'll all have that flat entrance way except the anchor on the end anchoring Route 8. We think it's important to keep that and do it now. Yeah. And do it as part of your initial project.
Did you, were you able to review 7B when it might be a multi-tenant with, I'm sure we're looking at one where this is almost a restaurant concept, you know, garage doors that kind of plays Route 8 that are all brick and to be reopened as garage doors like that type, you know, restaurant scene where it opens up in the fall three seasons. It doesn't work as well with that tower element as it does in the second option of 7B, which has most of the features of the tower element. It does not have the piece at the top, which could, you know, we could maybe build it in a way that allows it to become a teamwork if it is a single tenant or is that something?
Yeah.
Do you want that tower element if we have to rip it down because we come up with something different? I mean, how many works you guys later?
Yeah, I think Pam's opinion is that tower element's important, anchoring Route 8. I don't want to speak entirely for her. I would say that we should have that final conversation if that's the last piece of this. We should have that conversation with Pam administratively and reconfirm it. Now, of course, this is our recommendation to the commission. The commission may feel differently, but I do think that tower element's a piece of it that, you know, both Pam and I, in particular Pam, really likes that. That element.
So is that standing ovation from the tower?
It's on that bottom.
So is there anything else to be thinking right now or circle back around?
No, I mean, I think, again, they've done a nice job addressing, you know, the vast majority of the comments. I think they've really put a lot of effort to take a building that needs a lot of work and making it better. But we just, we just feel strongly that we need to look at the whole building as one piece. And so gable it all or just do the Route 8 element and leave everything else to match like you have with the Burlington and the other two existing tenants. Just so it's consistent.
Really, do you have anything?
What he said.
Okay. Sorry, can you say?
We'll just review all of the construction plans.
For you, it said, I'm looking at this, I just got this today. It's number six of Pam Schultz. He thinks they ought to at least gable the Burlington. Well, I think we've said we had a subsequent conversation with her and she gave her an or something if you're not, if you said.
Well, I think that that has been Pam's preference to gable the Burlington part, but I'm pretty sure that Burlington does not want that. In the applicant's strong stance is they want to keep it flat. And so based on that, in my conversation with Pam, is if it's going to remain flat, the other two tenants, Office Max and Petco are flat, that the. the other two tenants, Office Max and Petco are, are flat, that the two roughly new tenants to, to the right of Burlington should remain flat and just anchor the Route 8 portion and do it now as that tower element.
And she, and she went along, she goes along with that and she went along with that idea of keeping them all flat for the time being until we find out what kind of tenants come into there. Is that, is she along with that?
She's, she's saying, keep them flat consistently across the board if we're not going to do Burlington. Keep them all flat to match the, the whole front facade and then do the side anchor, the Route 8 as the, as the element described on the plan.
And how about her comments about the painted concrete block? Is that, did you address that too?
Um, let me-
Painted concrete block, I guess.
I think it's part of the whole upgrade because it's going to all get brick. It's going to be temporarily probably painted until they-
It's going to be a left and a right. The north and the west don't have painted block on it at all. The rear elevation, that's just all the service doors that is painted.
Well, her statement stated December 6th and I guess there've been some changes that I probably didn't know about.
Yeah, and I think that, that's a good question, in particular about that rear elevation. I think the commission needs to make a decision about that. I, I definitely would concur that as seen from, from, from the road, it's, it's extremely difficult to see that piece. And so how does the commission feel about that and what treatment level do you want to put on that rear elevation? Or should we encourage more dollars to be spent on the prime elevations, which are more visible?
That was my question.
Just a couple of comments. I think you guys did a really good job. You guys kind of took bits and pieces of the different elements we had all talked about. I think, again, going back to this, I think keeping them all flat, doing this corner element over here makes the most sense. Hearing kind of some of your comments in regards to, you know, I firmly believe that this should be done now and that side of the building as well. Kind of taking a hybrid of these two different elevations of what you have going on here and kind of wrapping the side, I almost wonder if you do just then pull that tower piece in and instead of doing an addition, having to add the foundations, you just make it part of this whole corner of the building, raise it up and then that can, if it does, in the end, become an entrance for a future tenant. You've got to, you can put your set of doors there and then you can put your set of doors right here if it were pushed back and then continue that piece on it. Still do kind of between these two elevations right here and here, but still have that nice corner tower entry. And then that really cleans this whole side of the building up. I think that's going to look really nice. I, and I think that should get done now just as part of the, the front of Burlington. And then in regards to the back, you know, not a huge fan of painting elements, but I think I'd rather see the money get put on the two elevations that you're going to see 99% of the time. I mean, the back of the building, you're going to see maybe a little bit here and there. But what I do wonder is if there's just something to put in place to make sure that it gets maintained, that it doesn't, you know, I mean, over time, paint starts to block off buildings. It starts to, it just, it happens, especially with climate warrants. So just maybe a maintenance program or something to make sure it's constantly updated and maintained, that if it does start to show that wear, you guys are, you know, scraping it down, painting it again, that type of situation.
Yeah, and I, I think that's required as just part of the mastodonian bylaws, right? Maintaining a property.
Yeah, and then it's hard as like the rest of this goes, I think then just coming back in when you have these tenants and then just moving this piece in the middle here, from here to there, so. I think I had any other comments. And I also think too that that'll save you guys some money without having to demo that entire Burlington facade. You can reuse that existing facade that's there already as opposed to having to gable that and gable, unless you find out something where it's going to stay.
Yeah, no, no, I think, no, no, and that's what our original submission was last time. It was really kind of that theme of trying to reuse. We struggled with the tower element being outside versus inside. When it's inside, it's, it's a little bit more involved with the structural changes.
That's fine. I mean, I, I understand that.
But, but I understand, I mean, you know, we're going to have to put a hole through the roof, build a foundation to bring that up through it, but, you know, we'll, we'll find a, our structural engineers will create it.
Keeping it on the side is easier. I'm completely fine with that as well, but I just think something nice and prominent on that corner, especially similar to what we've done across the street, makes a lot of sense. They kind of can play off of each other then and they'll really kind of anchor the piece nice, especially since then there is that gable element on the corner and the rest is going to be flat, just like what they did across the street.
I like the look of that tower a lot.
I do too.
I guess my only question is, as opposed to putting it in line with the current storefront, the premium here is frontage. That's, that's what we deal with with every tenant is, you know, 108 feet, I don't know. 112 feet, I don't know. So taking that tower and moving it into the existing facade, I think we give that up a little bit. If, if that tower doesn't play into whatever that event's going to be, we haven't got.
That's fine. It just was an idea to help save you guys the money on the cost if you could do it and also just try to kind of also play off the idea if you do put, if that restaurant does come forward and they want garage doors. I think either situation, it works, just trying to help element that a little bit better, but keeping it outside, I have no issue with that. I like it a lot. I think it looks good. It cleans up the whole side of that building. It looks really, it adds a lot of class to it, so.
Does that tell us a greater problem for traffic around here?
No, if we came off the existing storefront, we'd lose some parking there. As far as the truck study goes, it shouldn't bother with the truck, look at truck traffic.
So you guys, so you guys put a parking there?
Yeah, well, without, we would lose, yeah. I think we're cool with cart anyway, as a matter of fact.
And it wouldn't, so basically then when it come out past the parking room, it'll sit right on the corner of that park. That's fine. I, I have no concern or issues with that.
The potential, the auto center, the garden center, is that, is that coming off again or is that, are you leaving it for now?
I think we're leaving it for now and, you know, who knows what's, what's going to happen there. We have the user, we have our end unit that can use it for some, some reason.
I guess, I guess we're asking, I guess, to do the Route 8 side?
Yeah.
So I don't know if that would affect your decision on that, if that's what that, that you're circling right there, is that the bump out or is that?
Yeah, it's, it's a little further. I think it's going, it's about a third. Yeah. So we can either keep it and update it as part of the west, because we're discussing this a little bit later.
Well, if we just bring that aside renovation to it.
Okay.
Until we decide what we want to do. So, you know, if we just stop here, like put this on hold, you understand what the ultimate goal would be once we have a tenant, but then we can at least put that on hold so we don't, might not, you know, spending money here not knowing if we might have to rip it down, then it still gives you the majority of visibility from Route 8. Maybe you're catching the back corner, but if you're really focusing on that tower element and bringing it back, we'd really stand.
I appreciate you guys have heard of it.
Well, I'm saying if we stopped, if we stopped this work right when that bump out started until we can make a financial decision of what, what makes most sense for whatever tenant it's going to be, then spend the money doing, you know, the demolition and either, you know, powerless skin that.
I guess with that in hand, that, that's going to be less visible and collect the back, so we'd better do it, you know, just.
Yeah, because, because I'll be honest, there was one tenant where we looked at and we carved out that back space and that bump out actually became like almost a small office that you can build in there, a thousand square foot type. Because it, you know, but, but it could be used as something on that back end when you start looking at how you demise that property. And again, you know, it's not the best visibility, but it, but it would actually turn out to be a decent little spot where you have your office around the corner, but one nobody will have to care.
Because I don't have a problem with keeping it. I guess it's, yeah, it's, it's what do you do? Do we, do we say, like you were suggesting, kind of leave the finish of it go for now, knowing that, you know, we're going to require it, you know, with anything to go down there. I hate to have it linger and, you know, nothing pops in there for five years and we've still got that back little corner, but it is just the back of the corner. You know, I, I know you're doing a little bit, I guess we're, we're asking some things of you and you're doing that, so I kind of want to precipitate, you know, try and try and, okay.
What if you weren't just to update that, you're, instead of demoing that, instead of demoing that component and then putting, you know, adding a little bit more detail there, or if you were just to keep it, you'd save on the demo cost, you would then obviously almost like take what you're doing right here and preparing, you'd be putting it out on this facade and then just have to really fix these two sides and then it could become a piece.
Sure.
If you just left this there and just can reskin it, just like, just like you're doing, and then, and just make it a marketable space, I guess, is what I'm wondering, and it would save you the cost of demo. If you're already fixing from here to here, once you take this down, basically you still already have that facade, so you put your money there, you save that on your demo cost and it could cover both those sides. And at that point, you just update that facade when it's all done at once.
So the height of that garden center is off on the lower.
It drops down.
Quite a bit, yeah. So even, I think that's, you know.
And I, you were, I get what you're saying, setting on the demo cost, but you look at page eight, the bottom right, it's the relative height of the garden center. Those will be out.
I guess, could you ever see somebody moving in on that end unit and not wanting the extra space? I'd say, no, I don't want, you know, I, I guess, you know, if you went, just fix it up instead it's going to stay.
What retailers want these days is to change you, so I, I don't know.
I guess my concern would be only just, to just piecemealing it, like you're touching this and you're doing this, you're coming back and doing that, and there's no timetable. So I, I guess the reason why I brought that up would be to, you know, again, trying to continue to work with you guys in terms of coming up with a solution. I, I mean, I know, I wonder that if you just raised the parapet there a little bit to make it tie in the rest of the parapet, you skin that part of facade and then, and then that side's done, the corner's done, your other tenet's done, you just have that middle piece done, you know? Hopefully see a run-in later for everybody.
Is there an either or option? Or either option, rather? You know what, we reskin the whole thing or we demo it and just reskin that one a little bit.
I think you're going to see that. I think it's still going to be pretty visible from Route 8. That's my concern too, that you're not, I mean, you can see that clearly right there if you're driving by and to have part of it touched and the other part of it lost alone.
Can we, we need to do this without demoing that and then if we do demo it, still have this?
Like building that at the, at the base of the existing one right here?
Yeah. Isn't that what this shows?
Yeah. We, we could add the, the parapet above the, above and behind the existing center. We could build that. That, this already pops up. This is the, the rear service bay is already on.
Yeah, right, right.
So we could do that. And then, I mean, basically, we would finish the west elevation except for the, the service center. So what we're talking about is either we demo it and update the west elevation entirely, is that one option? An option two is update it to match the changes to the rest of the facade.
And leave it, and we can leave that piece be and it becomes a space that you can hopefully rent out. I don't have a problem with doing kind of what you, what you kind of sketching there. I mean, I know it's kind of harder, we're looking at different things. I don't have a problem with this kind of sits in the background and then your, your garden center piece still sits right here at lower elevation. It might not look right, I guess, I'm just kind of trying to sketch and piece things together, but I don't have a problem if you just did that component of it, you got that corner column there, maybe that column then sits somewhere in here on this piece so it does bump out. Again, to kind of help not do a ton of work where you're having to raise the ceiling or raise the parapet of that.
Yeah, I think, I think the, if we had either option, then I could go back and help like assess the cost because we do have to raise the parapet, which means you have to start reinforcing the structural steel. So at that point, it might be easier to demo it, build a facade flat, you're not hurting first quarter footage at the moment. And it does, as silly as it sounds, you know, these tenants don't want an extra, hey, we'll give you an extra 2,000 square feet, they don't want it. They're like, no, build a wall, we don't want it. And it's a lot, it becomes a liability.
Right, right.
And so I don't know if it's advantageous to keep it. It's not the most desirable space. Unless anyone's watching online that wants to rent it, then wonderful.
It, it feels to me demoing it and building up the tower is the best option for you. You're going to build that beautiful side up and then you're going to have that appendage that you're going to have to deal with. To me, it feels like you just remove it and I don't think people are going to want that space.
I think it'll just fill up a lot of stuff too, I just can't throw things away.
I think it'll just look really nice.
Yeah, you're a hoarder.
As you're coming down Route 8 and seeing that whole side complete, that nice new tower element done there and then just the, the middle piece, it's kind of not quite visible right now. And then once those other two tenants come in or three, whatever it ends up being, I think that'll, that'll really complete the plaza and make it look nice. And hopefully it'll, you know, by doing all of those things, hopefully it'll attract a bunch of new tenants for you that.
Is your interim plan while you're waiting to find your other tenants, is it to leave the existing Burlington front, you know, take their name off, build the new Burlington?
Or run along with another tenant.
Another tenant, so you're, you're going to be coming back with that second idea very soon.
I think within a, within a month or two, we should be back here with that second And then, you know, but, but we got to build the whole Burlington, so we're looking at maybe a July by the time they're doing their grand opening, moved out of their old space. Gives us a little bit of time to get, get a couple more tenants, but that, that second one is coming along.
Coming along.
Now, would you guys, do you think then you would just have one space left or two spaces? Are you going to try to go for, it just depends?
Our brokers, we're telling them market it as two market, if there's one marketed, however you can.
Okay.
So right now, what's being proposed is the new Burlington front, flat top.
Yes.
Conceptually, next to it would be flat top, whatever, one, two, three, whatever comes in, corner tower, going down the west side. I don't know if we've decided here what, you know, we like, the way I like the look that you're showing there, it's just, yeah, do you, I guess, the two, two things we'd like to see is either chop it off and do the whole side or leave it there and make it look like the rest. I don't know if either of those are acceptable to you guys, but I think that's, that's, at least a couple of us talking, you guys haven't spoken enough, I'm sorry.
I don't have anything that you guys have to talk about here.
Would you guys be okay with, with, you know, giving you time to kind of go back to the drawing boards, but still trying to keep this moving along? If we were to make a motion that said Plan A or Plan B of those two that I just mentioned, not having the plan that goes up to it and just leaves it looking like it is today, that's, we'd really like to avoid that, I think, because as I'm looking at it on Google Street view, it, it's a big chunk. It looks, you know, it's just, you know, it hasn't been maintained well. It just, it looks like an old garage doors and old garden center double glass, you know, and it's just, it would really nice to have it look like something. So either chop it off and do it all or do that spot up. Would, if we made a motion to A or B, your choice, submit it back to the administration, the rest of the stuff was approved, would you guys, once a, a motion like that, would that be acceptable? And you guys could have some, a little time to go back and run and think about what you want to do at the end, just knowing we'd like to see it somehow finished.
Yeah, I would say it, it gives us a little bit of time to re-investigate what you suggested, but- but more so allows us to move forward with buying out the Burlington, which, you know, I mean, at this point, our timeframe to build it with, it's, by changes, getting a little time crunched already. So, yeah, I, I think that'd be the, the best we could hope for at this point. Just be that.
So if we, if we made a motion that, yeah, it was either somehow the, the west side is finished, either with the building extension left there and finished, or it's taken off and finished, you guys could come back and decide by the time you submit your final plans that, I think we'd also like to see in this, you know, in your conceptual part of it, that, that, you know, the other units, show them as the flat when you go submit them back in, just so we kind of got that on record is, that's what we, our preferences for those, and showing the tower and all that kind of stuff. By the time you submit those changes, if you could, you know, maybe that would be enough time for you to decide what to do with them. I think if we're saying, we're tying all this, well, or at least tying the side and the power, Burlington, and the other two, I don't know. But it sounds like they're active, you're gonna be, you're gonna be back here with this, with the rest of it. You gotta get this back to us and it's gotta be built within years. Would you guys be okay with, with a motion like that? How are the?
One quick question. I think this might be directed at Mr. France. On sheet seven B, on details A and B, he mentioned something about thin brick on middle stud wall.
Yeah, I think that's what we agreed to at the last meeting, was allowing the quick brick or thin brick because it's a reapplication or reconstruction. I don't think the intent was that they were gonna use a standard masonry brick because it's a, it's a redevelopment project. And so I think that's what the commission agreed to. And we've allowed that on redevelopment projects.
Do you guys have samples too, by the way, that you can submit for the colors that you have? We haven't seen anything in terms of that other than this, the run rings.
We, we can get physical samples.
Is, is, is that, that tile area, is that something, is that something that say, hopefully doesn't happen, Burlington decides to close up in five years, easily removable and replaced to make it look like the other side of the doors?
It's castel right now, yeah.
Castel, yeah.
Castel, yeah, I just wanted to see what the color was, just to.
Yeah, we could, it could be replaced with thin brick and castel to match the other side if it changes.
And we, to be honest, I think we still have to get through that arrow. Getting the color signed off. We'll get to the, I mean, we'll get to the final color. Right now, that's, yeah, this is a very close color match to what their wood grain tiles looks like and so, you know, we're trying to get them back. I think it's.
I think they're almost.
You can't approve, are you done about the, the B?
No, I'm talking about the color, because they haven't finalized that Burlington, so we don't really have anything to worry.
Yeah, I, well, I was gonna, I think Mr. Westbrooks was asking me about the motion and I would just suggest that, that, and I appreciate the confidence in the consultants, that, that if, if we, we can work diligently with the, the applicant and their, their architect, but if we can't, if we hit a snafu and we can't come to an agreement on things, that we would bring it back to the commission.
Okay, that's fair.
Quick question, do you, what do you, your guess, you've gotta take that, if you wanna get the B in there, we're saying you gotta take it to BZA. If they denied the B, do you think Burlington would still go with, want to go with that area?
I don't, I don't.
No idea?
I don't know.
Just like we have no idea what BZA is.
I, I wouldn't just call it a stone medallion. It's not really, I mean, it's just got a logo on it.
It's a sign.
It's a heart, yeah, it's a heart medallion on it. You don't buy that, huh?
Uh, no.
It's a, it's a heart that kind of looks like.
Naturally occurring.
Yeah, I, I don't know. Obviously, if we, if we wanna pursue the medallion with the B in there, we'll have to come back to, to get that very close.
So, Mr. France, you were saying to my thoughts on a motion, you think, just need to put the caveat back into it, that if it can't be agreed to administratively, that it needs to come back?
Yeah, I, I'd feel more comfortable with that because that gives, you know, we're, we're consultants, so we're, we understand what the commission's position is and we're trying to work through it. If we, if we get to a point where sometimes not everybody agrees on everything, then we would just ask that it come back to the commission. I don't, I don't foresee that here with, they've, they've been working with, Craig and these guys have been working with us, so I, I don't foresee it, but just to be safe, I'd like it, you know, if the commission would consider it, add that to your motion.
So this is gonna be a tricky one.
You better make it.
Yeah, I'm just gonna start spitballing stuff. Okay, so, Suzie, ready to take some?
I'm ready, I think.
Okay, so make a motion to approve the plan to construct the new Burlington entrance as shown in the plan, contingent on approval of the BZA for the signage. Additionally, the tower concept in the corner.
Option seven A.
Yeah, option seven A, including the tower in the corner and completion of the west side of the building. Should I even mention the two different options that we're thinking about or just say completion of the left, the west side? And that's what's being.
Yeah, so I think that was the applicant's preference, that you give that option, and so you were on a great path and I think you were leading down that the second option is to build it up?
Yeah, yeah, so completing the west side to either remove the bump out and complete the side or leave the bump out there, but still finish the facade?
To match the rest.
Yeah, to match the rest of the building.
And then just the.
Conceptually to show future tenants as being the flat tops entrances. And that should be approved administratively, the west, the west elevation, I understand be agreed to and then brought back to the planning commission. So you think you got it all?
I think so.
So it's, it's the Burlington front entrance, it's the tower, it's the west side, either cutting off the bump out or leaving it there, but finishing the whole facade.
Right.
In conjunction with the Burlington?
Yeah, so all that would be done. And then show conceptually the flat tops, uh, concept for the other potential users.
Okay.
And administrative approval of the west side.
We need to state in there that they'll come back for approval for this when that time comes, based on a temporary tenant basis, or how does that give?
I think, I think that's understood.
Given, okay, that's fine, just wanna make sure we didn't need to give anybody a level.
All right, is there a second?
I will second.
Wouldn't you second? Any more discussion on that motion, Susan?
No. It is like a preliminary plan, is this?
I think this, this is final.
Oh, it is?
This is your final plan?
Final approval. All right, any more discussion? All right, all in favor? Or actually, Suzie, go ahead.
Mr. Westbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Chabon?
Yes.
Mr. Pats?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
All right, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you so much. Next is the wave car wash. We'll sign, we gotta sign this on the paper here and then we'll be ready to talk. But you could sit down. We're not doing anything secret. While they're signing, get your name for Susan.
Yes, yes, sir. Good evening, Susan. Bob Johnson, J O H N S O N, with M D, M as Mary, D as a David, M as Mary Services, out of Lakeview, Ohio. No, you're Lake from Florida, sorry. I'm from Florida, sorry.
It's a nicer look.
Well, I'm out of Michigan, but the greater white part of the state.
Oh.
There you go.
Oh, we, I already vetted him, I already took care of that, yeah. Yeah, well, I almost canceled the meeting with him.
All right, why don't you give us a note of view of what's being planned?
All right, well, I appreciate your opportunity to speak for you. And I also like to mention that Brian Grassa and Kelly Swers are here from Cedarwood Development in case there's any, any questions with regards to the, the history and ownership of the site. Again, I'm Bob Johnson with M D M Services, representing Magnolia Wash Holdings, they're a client. And Wave Washed is the name of the premium car wash facility that will be located at 309 East Highland. And the site is currently on B four highway business district, as you all know. So we're not here for dealing with a zoning issue, thankfully. We also looked into the wetland slash stream conditions that are on, on the site, so there aren't any sensitive conditions that we have to contend with, which is a good thing. We are, in terms of Ms. Schultz and, and Mr. France, we've talked about the, well, I think Brian, as well as Patty, though she's not here, we've had communication with, with staff or in terms of consulting, saying, to help guide us through some of the processes, as well as Mr. Rodick, thank you, for your help as well. And I know, our gentleman, Joe?
Yes.
The engineer.
Yes, nice to meet you, sir.
You too. To kind of go through the, the issues here, the site itself is just under an acre in size, it's 42,000, 42,847 square feet, it's 0.9 acres. We are off, we're near the intersection of State Road 8 and East Highland Road, just on the north side of the Kentucky Fried Chicken facility that's there. From a design standpoint, we're complying with, and you'll see in the presentation material, elevations, as it's referred to as Western Reserve Standard Design?
Yes.
And so, what was a little confusing for me, because we had Windstream Western Reserve Telephone Company on the site as an easement. And the easements, and I'll talk about this because Joe's brought this up, easements that were Windstream Western Reserve Telephone Company, they're in the process of abandoning it, to traverse the property, as well as Ohio Edison. So I've been in contact with, let me see her name, Amanda Turner with Ohio Edison and Mr. Brian Vincent with Windstream Western Reserve. Both entities have already relocated their utilities and they're in the process of vacating the utility of the easements rather than traverse the property. So that's, that's the way. We also provided the, the access, the ingress, egress easement agreement, the access to the road. There's an easement that's in place that we have benefit off in terms of ingress and egress to lead down to East Highland Road. It's a private facility and so that's an important piece of documentation to present. We've done that. The facility itself is roughly 3,500 square feet, single story. We have signage that's going to be on the west elevation, which is the State Road 8 side, and on the south elevation, the side that faces Kentucky Fried Chicken. And there's also a monument sign that will be placed near the entrance to the parcel. Again, it's shown on, on the presentation material. And that signage is approximately, just under 50 square feet for the monument sign. The impervious surface, just over 58% of the areas impervious, that's pretty significant that we have impervious surface, that's roughly 41, 42% of the site. So we have, it's a, it's a vacant parcel now, green, and so there's gonna be landscaping all around the property on all four sides, we're gonna have it used. We're also gonna replicate the brick slash iron, wrought iron fencing on the western edge of the property, which is the State Road 8 side, so continuing that theme going north along State Road 8 to tie into the design concept that currently exists on KFC property. Now, there was some discussion about parking spaces, we actually have 14 vacuum utility stalls on it. And the width of these stalls is more than typically see for a parking space, and the reason for that is because people open their car doors to gain access. You have two car doors on either side that are open and so people moving in and out at the vacuum stations, not parking spaces in the traditional sense. Having said that, there are two traditional parking spaces for employees. And then there's one parking space for handicap vehicle, a van or something of that nature. So you have 14 vacuum utility stations and there are, there's one handicap station, in terms of parking, for, again, for vacuum, a vacuum station, and then two non-vacuum stations, which are the traditional parking spaces and those would be for employees. We're gonna be, we have deciduous trees on the site, I think there are some conifers as well, but we're gonna, as part of our landscaping plan, we'll be adding to, to that, that schedule as well in terms of providing additional plant material along the site. That, for the most part, ladies and gentlemen, is what we're doing to be, to use again, is car wash is permitted on the site. And I really wanna thank Brian and Kelly for their, their assistance in working through the tangled web with gaining access to the various utilities and as far as those easements that are being vacated. Very helpful to be, have that kind of local contact here. And I was here earlier, back in November, on November 19th, to deliver the plans and to get those, and something that is reasonable and close for you to be able to make a site visit and of course, participate in today's proceedings. That's, that's the presentation, are there any questions? If you weren't happy, I'd do my best to answer them.
We probably will. I'm sure we will have some questions.
Yes, sir.
Mr. France, do you want to go over your thoughts?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So you have a, an initial report from me dated December 4th and while it's a, a work of art, I don't think it's necessarily anything we need to spend too much time on because the applicant, I did have a meeting with the applicant and their staff last week and as a result of that meeting and discussions with Pam Schultz, the applicant has revised the plans and I put out a memo dated December 19th, I think is probably the one we should focus on for this evening. So as the applicant stated, 3,500 square foot car wash, slightly less than an acre, zone B four, the use is a permitted use in that zoning district. The site layout, I continue to want to discuss the, the layout of the building, how it sits on the property. It doesn't, it just doesn't feel like it fits in with the neighboring properties because it's moved far to the north and sits more toward the middle of the property as it relates to the east-west. My desire was to move it toward the middle of the property, more south on the, on the site. And from talking with the applicant during our, our 1216 meeting, it sounds like that's difficult for them because of the way the traffic movement sits on the property and how they go into the, the pay canopy area, you pay and then you go through the wash tunnel you come out and as part of payment of your car wash, you can vacuum your car, it's included in your car wash cost. And so the layout they feel is how it needs to be, given the width of the property. I still just wanna examine how maybe we can move it closer to, to Route 8. There's the, after you go through the, the pay canopy area, there's an exit that goes south and flows into the, the. south and flows into the, the drive aisle where the, the vacuum stalls are. And I just wonder what the purpose of that is, if you, and the applicant will be able to explain it to us much better. But it feels like you get in line and it's an accidental, oops, I really don't belong here, and you can go back out south. Or you go up, pay the canopy, pay at the canopy station, and if you just want to vacuum, maybe you go through that and you have to come back out. It just feels like an unnecessary space, that maybe we could eliminate that and move the building closer to Route 8. So that was something that I just wanted to talk through tonight as we talk about the site layout. I have no additional comments about the, the parking spaces, the width and such, now that I understand what the purpose is, they're all for vacuum. We are going to have the cleanest cars in northeast Ohio in Macedonia, both inside and out. The drive aisle width, I think, can be reduced as well. It's shown at 24 feet, and I think we can reduce that in 11. Let me see what the code, what the code says with the width you can drop down to, but I feel like you can go down to 20 feet, 22 feet drive aisle. So you can reduce that a couple feet, pick up some additional green space, you know, again, maybe to the north. So I think that, that is something of discussion. Signage, I really didn't spend a lot of time on signage. It's a separate submittal, but just note, the applicant stated 51 square feet on the monument. The code limits it to 40 square feet. So that will be something you'll need to, to work through, whether it's requesting a variance or just reducing the area of the sign, which would be the strong preference. Landscaping was revised to have a better mix of deciduous and non-deciduous trees. So we'll do a complete evaluation at final plan approval. Photometrics are now supplied. My first memo, they had not been. The review of the photometrics, I think we're going to need some revision, I know we're going to need some revisions there. At the Route 8 side and the south side, south property line, they're, they're fairly intense lighting levels. The planning commission has historically utilized one-foot candle at property lines. So I just think that it's not unachievable. It just needs to be looked at in terms of lighting levels. I didn't get a sense on the, and by the way, we did ask for the, the fence, the decorative fence and the brick columns to be continued. And do appreciate the applicant, you know, providing that on their plan. Really was no discussion. So I think they've, they've been good potential corporate citizens here in Macedonia. They haven't argued with us too much on, on items, really not on any in particular. I think the site layout's the one of most challenge that we just need to talk through. They did continue that. I don't know on those, on those columns, if there's lighting on the existing. I didn't think there was. And I didn't know if you were proposing lighting on your columns, but there was pretty intense lighting along Route 8. That's what maybe believed, maybe you were showing lights on the columns. So I just think the photometrics need to be worked through for the final plan approval. And then architecturally, they did a great job improving the plans to complement the KFC and adhere to the town center district standards. A few items of just notation that I think we need to carry and talk about going into the final plan. Colors for the, the brick has been changed to a full utility brick, which is great, which is what we require on new construction. And so they've, they've provided that. We just need those color, colors to be provided to the city for review. The garbage dumpster enclosure needs to be clad in the same brick as the building. It still shows the, the block. It's probably just didn't get caught up on the, on the drawings. I do have some concern, and I talked to Pam about my comments. I forwarded those off to her last night when I sent them on to the city from the revised plans. She concurs in full with my comments about the architectural elements that I noted in here. The gable portion of the east elevation is, is barely blank, and it needs to be revisited at some type of design element in the gable portion. And then the, the windows on that west elevation, they seem out of place. And so can it be relocated between the man door and the overhead door? And I think, Mr. Westbrook, you have it there on your screen. Can that window be relocated? It just seems out of place, like it's just sort of stuck in there. And I don't know on the interior, I haven't seen the interior plans to know if it can or can't be, but that was just something we wanted to talk through. And then the south elevation needs some type of architectural interest. Can the windows receive a trim treatment of some sort? Something, I know what your point is, you want to be able to look in and see the cars going through the tunnel. So we understand that. But some sort of treatment on those windows to, to do something. I mean, it's, it's great to have the full utility brick, but it just feels like something needs to be done on that elevation. And then the blank north building elevation, well, I understand it's the back of the building. It's still a visible area. It's all part of a redevelopment area. And that back elevation, which is the north building elevation, needs something. We're not suggesting that it, you need to spend tons of money on that elevation, but something to dress it up. It could be, it could be soldier coursing the brick. It could be a thin band at the top of soldier course, something to add some visual interest to that back elevation. And then, not entirely sure what that window is on that elevation. I don't recall if that was on the previous version, but just talk through what exactly that is.
Yeah, that's, that's part of the lobby. So that's that corner we just had mentioned, the man door. The one window.
Okay.
That's, that's just the north, the north side of that wall. The north wall, but then that same stuff.
Okay.
So allow for some natural light to come in. Instead of having just an enclosed lobby area that seems like a wall.
Yeah.
So it's just kind of add some, just natural light.
Sure. And I'm all about getting natural light into the building. I would say, you know, for, and I would rely on Pam and the planning commission, but more would be better. So if there's a way to get more natural light in, have more windows in that area, maybe to add some element on that, that north facade in addition to some of those other ideas, it would be, I think, helpful. So previously, I'd recommended continuing this item, tabling this item, but the applicant has done a nice job. There's a permitted use in the B4 district. They've done a nice job of revising the plans and really addressing a lot of the issues. You know, I think overall, the site layout needs some minor improvement and some discussion about that one-way south drive coming out of the pay canopy and what the purpose of that is. And is there a way to eliminate that and shift the building even a little closer to Route 8? And we're trying to create a corridor element, I think, with the redevelopments that are occurring. And so that's kind of where the comments are being driven from.
All right. Real quick, can I ask? Thank you. So just understand the operation is kind of zooming in on the, the building itself. It looks like, so is there like a lobby you go into?
There's going to be a lobby for the, for the employees in or anyone that needs to walk into. Most people are going to walk through, they're going to walk through as that car proceeds down the line. There's going to be a separate interior wall separating the wash tunnel area from the, the customer side. They're going to be inside the building and be able to walk down.
Because this is a little different than, than, like, sit in your car and ride through. You get out, your car goes through, you walk and watch it go down the thing and get back in at the end.
Yeah, so that's, in terms of, it's different, different applications. They do it both ways. So I'll, if I could just reserve that comment because of the interior, like we just, Brian was saying, we don't have the interior, we can't, layout, but it could be one of the others. Remain in your car or walk down this, the, the interior corridor, walking from left to exit point. There are car washes that do that, then at the end, you know, there's the, people are drying things, doing whatever little detail at the very, very end of the car wash, and then you get, you re-enter your vehicle and then move on to the vacuum stations. So, anyway, I can get that information in terms of how the interior workings of this particular layout, because they do it both ways.
I was just thinking about that. I guess, and I think it's Mr. France, maybe he was a little too young. You've got that area as you're walking through there, instead of having blank, empty wall, could you put windows or something on that backside as an opportunity to get some natural light? I mean, you could almost do it most of the way, except for maybe the restaurants that you got there.
Well, I was going to say, Mr. Chair, that would actually be the south elevation where the windows are, and that's really, that would be the side that you'd be walking on, so that natural light would be coming through. You wouldn't be on the north side with a blank wall, then, which Mr. Francis pointed out, would be some architectural.
The color you said, I think, shows some difference. Something, it shows it actually the opposite of what you're explaining, which I think is why the confusion is. Because this is showing, this is showing, now it's all the glass wall, this is showing it's a blank solid wall. And that's the side that.
I see what you're, I see what you're referring to. I see what you're referring to. Yes. Okay.
So.
Put some, okay. Okay, so perhaps there could be some windows towards the, obviously, you know, with the bathroom and so forth, not there, but in this, this area here.
Are these offices right here?
The, are the storage areas, we have a mechanical room.
Okay.
And, yeah, these are utility and mechanical rooms, and you've got the one restroom. So you have the front areas, you can see the lobby area, then there's the restroom, but then there's going to be a utility facility and storage facility.
Okay. So, yeah, after that, I think would be.
Yeah, so after that, okay, on that note, while I stand corrected, I have to apologize. I apologize.
Sure. Thanks, Chairman. I think everybody's got my memo on this topic. I had six comments. I won't bother reading, all of whom verbatim, but comments three and six were really just information for the applicant. You've already touched on a couple of them, sir, one being the wetlands question and the other being the utility easements to cut across the property. It sounds like you're addressing those. So please provide us that information for both of those topics when you have it available. Items one and two were really the important ones here for this meeting. Item two was regarding the decorative fencing along State Route 8. You've indicated you're going to provide that to match the KFC property, so that's good. Leaves only comment one, which is stormwater management. The plan that was submitted doesn't show any type of detention pond or stormwater feature, so.
Similar to what KFC has done in terms of the dry basin, we were going to take an approach similar to that and deal with the northeast of their regional stormwater district, of course, getting our approval. So we are, the abundance of green space, fortunately, we have areas whereby we can, we can locate that type of stormwater management facility. So that will be incorporated and enforced through the necessary channels for it.
Yeah, the approval is from our city.
Yep. Perfect.
Just to make the applicant aware that on the construction plans, we follow 2017 fire code.
Yes, sir. We already moved that along. Thank you for that memo. That memo has been shared with our team. The one question was, does the building have to be sprinkled? I mean, it's going to ask us this. I mean, there's a lot of water.
That'll base, be based on the design?
On the design.
Yeah. Most likely not, but.
But we'll follow. We have your code.
And we do have a Knox box ordinance. It'll have to have a Knox box on the outside.
Mr. Rodick, you got anything?
Just one thing. I talked to Mrs. Schultz earlier today, and she wanted me to mention that we haven't received any plans or design for the, the pay, the pay station kiosks.
And I think we've also got councilman with us. I was going to, Mr. Renshaw, opportunity, I think you had a question or two.
I do. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I speak on these two particular items based on my 46-plus years in law enforcement. Have we, will there be, has there been or will there be a traffic survey done with the congestion that could arise from this additional building in that area? You're crossing no matter what, three Portland's of traffic at all times, going in or coming out?
We just, we haven't asked for it, I don't believe, yet. I don't think the, the city has. The planning commission hasn't asked for it. I know we talked about it a lot when the KFC went in. Getting in and out, we, we told this to KFC at the very start, and Mr. Grassa knows this, we talked, yeah, he was involved with us. We said, you know, it's going to be very difficult to get in and out at certain times a day. You know, there's, you're not going to, you're not going to get a signal. There will never be a signal there because it's just too darn close. It's, it's going to be very, very difficult. And they said, okay, I think you understand. Opened up within a month, I think they were saying, it's really hard to get in and out of here. What can you guys do? You know what I mean? And we're like, well, we kind of told you that. I don't, we can, I do traffic studies. That's what I do. And knowing, seeing the site, looking at it, you can do a traffic study, I don't know what it's going to tell you. There's, there's nothing you can really do out there to make this any better. You know, peak times, five o'clock, there's no way you're going to make a left out of there. There's no way you're going to make a left into there. It's going to be right in, right out. Other 22 hours of the day, if you wait long enough, you'll, you'll make your move. If you have a traffic study done, it's not like it's going to tell you, here's a magic fix. You build this additional lane, and now everything's going to be working. It's, it's going to say, it's just going to suck. And, yeah, when you look at those peak hours, that's, that's a technical term. I mean, don't talk that out. Traffic. But there's, you know, it's not like, you know, build a right turn lane. Those are the kind of things when you see something going, you know, you got to put a traffic signal, you got to build a right turn lane, a left turn lane, and, you know, blah, 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 blah. There, there's nothing that can be done. It's just, you know, we have to provide them the access to their property. That's what we have. We could restrict it to right in, right out only, and say, you know, physically restrict it. I think it kind of does that itself, you know? I don't know, you know, anybody from back here or Mr. Bell?
Yeah, Chairman, the only other thing I would, no, everything that you've said is correct. I agree with you. The only other thing I would mention, too, and you sort of touched on it at the end, is the applicant is not requesting a new access point on the Highland Road. If they were requesting a new access drive or whatever on the Highland Road, then I think we would stop. We need a traffic study. But in this case, you kind of touched on it, we can't deny the applicant access to his property. This is his only access point. So.
They'll never get access off of Route 8.
Yeah. Access off Route 8 is impossible, even worse than this, quite honestly, so.
I believe Myers is having an issue across the way.
Very, very likely.
And the Northfield Center side of the street.
And the only reason that the, by Lowe's and Chipotle, they got that because it's a big enough development and then, you know, to relieve some pressure off of 82, that was allowed.
There were a lot of reasons why we got that.
This would, they'd never let something here. But I think, you know, if we had our dreams and our hopes, that whole giant area, the hotel, the Speedway, the, the old restaurant, it all would have gone at once and blew it all up and put new access point, maybe down at Capital, and maybe that could be far enough to put a signal, even though it's not much farther, and redo it. But of course, things.
We don't have the, it's not a light house, so you can't move things around.
Right. So, so, I mean, the, the hope, you know, so I, I think it's, it's going to be much like it is today. Thankfully, a car wash, I mean, even when they're busy, they're spitting out a car whatever, like three or four or five minutes, you know? So it's not like you're, 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 there's not going to be a backup of 20 cars all at once. It's not going to be like.
Yeah, there's not a rush.
It's, it's going to be 25 cars an hour or something like that, one every couple of minutes at the most.
I can understand everything that's being said.
Yeah.
It's just that I'm blaming myself for coming in here and asking this question. I left, I left a phone message from Mr. France. I've been sitting here all of this time. I didn't want to just get up and walk out when I was asking my question. I really do. And anybody that knows me well enough know that that's not me. I do have a second question that I'm not going to ask because I did tell you there was two. I don't think it's broken. Okay? And I'm learning that with age. I'm only 70. Come on, guys.
Spring chicken. Yeah.
Come on, thank you for your time. Good luck with your new venture. And thank you all. I hope everybody has a great holiday season.
Happy holidays, Vinnie. And I just want to just dovetail on what the councilman said. I did have a conversation with the mayor about this very issue. He's concerned about the traffic as well. with the mayor about this very issue, he's concerned about the traffic as well, and we talked about a traffic study, and, and I'm not a traffic engineer, but my assessment was, I don't know what a traffic study's gonna tell us, other than maybe a restricted right in, right out, but it'll probably restrict itself, as you said, so, just, you know, the, the mayor was concerned about the same.
If, if, if someday, we're starting to see a rash of, of left turn crashes, and for the good of motor and publics, that you have to come back and say, this is gonna have to be physically restrained to a right in, right out, and, and, that's, that'll be the city's ability to do that. Tenants back there are not gonna like that, and hopefully it never comes to that, because I don't wanna see a bunch of crashes happen in Porsche. Hopefully, the, the, the situation does kind of regulate itself, and you just don't go there at five o'clock expecting to take a left on the highway.
I passed through there, well, I was up until about a month ago, passing there, going in and out of KFC, two times, one day a week, with my work with the Emergency Assistance Center. And it, it's, you know, sometimes I just would, you know, almost like, close my eyes and I could keep on going without getting wet. Mr. Westbrook, at another time, not in an official meeting, since you just explained that your specialty is grabbing, I would love to sit down and talk to you, and it has nothing to do with the city of Massa doing it.
Anytime.
Joe and I have talked.
I'm sure I know which one you're talking about.
We laugh about it every time it comes up, and just because, okay? Again, thank you, everybody, for your time, and I really appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm sure you guys have questions?
Yeah.
This is a couple, quick ones, as usual for Brian. I have your December 6th statement, and I'm sure it's been modified, but, you know, you said that, well, there's no frontage on Route Eight, lack of massive, massing on Route Eight. You've modified that, right, because the hotel behind it doesn't mass on Route Eight either, and really, KFC doesn't actually.
I mean, KFC.
The side of this car wash is probably the only appropriate way to be facing Route Eight, is that, don't you agree with that?
Well, so, let me, let me say that I do think KFC was designed purposely, laid out the way it is, because it's the corner site, to try to get some frontage both on Eight and Highland, and make a presence, and sort of anchor that corner. So I think it does that. This is not a great site for a car wash, a long car wash tunnel, I mean, it just isn't, from a standpoint of trying to mass it on Route Eight, because it's a long east-west tunnel on a narrow site. So they're, they're doing their best of trying to do that. I felt that if we could push the building closer to Route Eight, it would be helpful. I discount the Key Inn, because my strong desire is, it doesn't, it's not there much longer, and it gets redeveloped. And when that happens, the building will be designed differently to Route Eight.
Much longer, I missed that.
I said, my desire would be, it's not there, here and in the near future, because it's not, it's not an ideal use on that, on that corridor.
Hotel.
Yeah, the hotel, the Key Inn. Now, now, I don't, I don't get the, I don't get to pick and choose which monopoly pieces go away at times, but, so, but I think it, my point is, it's a redevelopment piece, the Key Inn will eventually redevelop, and, and hopefully will be able to continue to create the corridor along Route Eight with some massing. So that was my, my point, I've had conversations with the designer and the applicant here this evening, I understand their limitation of what they're, what they're, they're trying to do with how they run it through the, the sequence for getting into the tunnel and paying. I just question whether that 17-foot one-way out was necessary, and if it, if it isn't 100% necessary, we could continue to bump the building up closer to Eight.
You're talking aesthetics, right?
I am.
This is, this is property, as you said yourself, very difficult for anybody to get in there, and I imagine the landlord is delighted that somebody would take this, don't you think? I mean, it strikes me as, we'd lucky to have somebody come in here and use this site at all. If you ever go by there, it'd be very difficult for any tenant to get in there, but that's what confused me a little. The only other question I had is the monument sign on KFC, it's got KFC and plenty of room. Is this, is this gonna be, is that the other tenant's gonna be in there, is that on that monument sign, right on?
I think their desire is to have their own.
Well, in fact, the thing, that's a great question, because I wondered the same thing about the KFC, because right there, blank panels, plenty of blank space.
Yes, we have our monument sign, as is shown on the plan, right on the private drive, on the east side of the.
I saw that. That confused me, because, like, you think on Highland and Route Eight, it'd be, well, they're gonna find you, but.
Well, that's, that's a great question, so I didn't know if there was an easement, if it was a.
Mr. DeGra.
Yes, sir.
If it pleases the board, I may address Brian Gross, the steward of development, Representative Brian Honore. So, if everybody recalls, most of you were on the board that when we talked about the KFC, the monument sign was set up, and there are agreements in place amongst the various property owners. There's several side panels. KFC was supposed to get the top, second panel was allotted for this site, and then there were two other panels, one that is supposed to go to Keith, or whoever owns that property, and then one is supposed to go to the Yenko property, which is the blank property behind the Speedway.
Yeah.
That required a variance, because it's considered off-premises signage. I appeared before the BZA, back whenever that approval period was, and that variance was denied at that point. So, I've had follow-on conversations with the past administration and the current. It was told to me that when someone came in for this, they can reapply for that variance, and rehear that matter, and then perhaps, if the BZA allowed it, would allow them to have signage on it. I believe the mayor's, and I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, but the intent was to clean up the signage of that corner, and consolidate it all into one element, and that's why it was constructed the way it is. There are agreements in place amongst property owners to allow this to happen, it's just a procedural issue of having the proper city approvals.
Hmm.
So, we can talk, yes.
I think that'd be the place for the sign, somebody will have to drive up that driveway toward the hotel, even to see the broader idea of the sign.
Yes, are you still, you still are proposing, you would still like to have one?
We still would have the monument sign, still on the east side of the front, it's just a question of whether. And that, that's, the variance would be, I guess, the, the sign that would be at the corner, the KFC monument sign, that would be the variance, another one would be permitted by right, except for the square footage of the signage, where we have to get the signage now, and how many signs can we have, because if that corner sign at the KFC is counted towards, then it may be over. So we just have to technically understand what path we should consider taking. But I appreciate you asking that question, because I'd like to.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I could, I got a question for Mr. DeGra. Is the, is the property by chance deed restricted to require it to go on that sign?
No.
So you're not limiting their ability to have a ground, a second, another ground monument sign?
No.
Okay. Okay. So, yeah, I mean, have a right to an additional monument sign, albeit a, not sure what it's gonna accomplish.
I think it's more, in my opinion, would be directional signage, tell on people, pull into the drive, to enter the car.
Yeah, they can, they can do directional signage without 50 square feet, so, I would agree, that would be good to have. But I also agree with, as Mr. Cox pointed out, it's kind of tucked away up there, it's, you already know you're going into the car wash, so. That's for a future conversation, though, I think, because signage has to be submitted separately.
Yeah, if you've gotta go to BZA to get that, I think that's what you're saying, to get on the main sign, and try to do that sooner or later.
Well, I guess they're fast, so they often get guidance, I think, at that time, it was considered off-premises, I mean, I don't know if there's been any, there's just, we thought about that.
Oh, it's, it's an off-premise sign, yeah, yeah, it definitely is. So, we can work with Mr. Gedetti, we have a conversation.
Like, yeah, I'm just thinking, you know, it would be good if, if, if it's determined through those conversations, that you gotta go, you have to try to BZA sooner or later, to see how it impacts the actual signage, when you wanna get your sign approved, if you are older, or maybe that's, oh, maybe it becomes a negotiation, I don't know, but it'd be good to get their answer.
Was there some press for the signage to be set in the middle line?
Yeah, it's not.
Yeah, not for tonight.
I've got, I got some comments involved.
Just three really quick things, I mean, this is just more my curiosity, do you have any hours? What they said.
I don't know the hours, I can get that fourth floor, I'm sorry.
But this is a man's?
It's two, two employees, so again, two employee parking spaces, so there will be staff.
So, it wouldn't be like a 24-hour hour, right?
I don't believe so, I will confirm that for you, but I do not believe so.
Okay. The other thing, when we did Cleanland, there was a lot of discussion in the vacuum, the decile level, the sound level, is that a consideration, you're considering that there's a hotel next door?
Well, the hotel is commercially zoned.
Look, there was residential next door to Cleanland, I remember, there was one house.
That was the only reason we had that discussion.
I recall that being the main reason why, yes.
Yeah, and the hotel, it, yes, it's, it's containing people staying there, but it's commercially zoned, and it's considered a commercial use.
Okay, and then the only other thing, it was an architectural thing, does that have to have a grid for the western bit?
That was one of my comments, so.
I didn't, I didn't, I looked, and something, I missed it, but I was just wondering if that's a requirement, just so he knows if they go up that.
Yeah, the mutton bars.
Mutton bars.
Mm-hmm.
The only mutton.
That's all I have, is those three.
Okay.
Yeah, I had a few comments, talking through kind of different site plan layouts and options, one of the things that caught my attention was just seeing this, one, we don't know what this canopy structure looks like, and two, just having that kind of on the front facing this main road right here, I almost wonder if you could flip the entire building, and have that pay station put in the back, it would allow you to get the building up closer to the street, it would then allow it to have more frontage on the street, and then we wouldn't have to see that canopy structure, I mean, because that's gonna be, from all different vantage points, that's gonna be the first thing you're gonna see, and that's a concern. I, I guess we don't know how it looks, but my guess is, it's, it's probably not the most appealing thing, and seeing that, before seeing the building, I just see it being a thing, so I was wondering, is there a reason why we couldn't just take the entire site and flip it?
So you're gonna have, the one thing about driving in, you have that staging of vehicles, if you push the canopies to the eastern portion, you have no room.
You should still have room, though.
You'd have room.
If you would flip the building, you'd be able to move the whole building forward, and then you would get your stacking, because you're not gonna be able to stack out into this road anyways, at that point. And if you took the drive right here off the main drive, and it kicks forward, you're still gonna have a good amount, probably gonna almost have, you should have a lot of stacking.
Okay, coming off of private road there?
I would either say the private road, or just off of right here, off of this road, and by the time you push all of this forward, you're essentially, you've got, it's a, it's a mirror image of this.
I understand, sure.
So this would then allow this building, the building to sit pretty much right here. Your drive's still, this piece of the drive is still right here, you then got some better visibility for your building itself, the pay station canopy would be in the back.
Mm-hmm.
And then, you know, if you're able to eliminate this, I guess, if you can eliminate that drive grade, if you can, then that's fine, too, because again, back here, it slowly gets that building up closer to the street.
Right.
The other comment I had in regards to mechanical equipment, just blocking, making sure those are screened, the, yeah, I had somewhere, oh, yeah, here, so, one of my other recommendations is gonna be, these just kind of looked oddly proportioned, the little pop-ups here, I like the look of them, but I think if you made them a little bit fatter, and brought them back a little bit, they look a little bit more weighted, they seem a little, almost like, I mean, there's, so I think if you brought them back, gave them a little bit more weight to the base, and then also the roof structure as well, I think that would look a little bit better there.
So you're saying, either, that's what I'm trying to understand, bring them back, or to widen them?
Just widen them, widen, no, widen them, widen them, basically, this entire thing becomes your roof, and then your base is there, right there, so that would help weight that down, and almost, what my view was, is it almost becomes the same width as your column below, so it helps anchor it a little bit more. Couple of other ones were, if you look at doing something in terms of the doors that are gonna go up and down for the car wash, can we look at doing something that's glass, something that's maybe a little bit more decorative than, it looks, it appears that they're going to be brown, and the same thing goes with, like, the roof, the metal roofs, I think something other than brown would look a little bit more attractive.
Still, we'll do the door inside, or the south side?
That was what I was gonna suggest, and that's, that was one of my other questions, is there, is that a door, or is that, what is the reason for that? Because it doesn't look like, based on the site plan, it doesn't look like, it's not a door? Was it intended to be a door, it's just not on this application, or, it looks like it almost was a door there.
Yeah, where I'm looking at it here.
So I'm wondering if that, if that truly is a style of doors they use, I would, I would like to see that on the front and back.
So, Mr. Chairman?
On the front and back, yes, because.
For the entrance and the exits.
For the entrance, yeah, because again, what's, that's gonna come down to, is once that corridor, the rest of that kind of gets dissolved, it's not really going to be, it's essentially not gonna be the back of the building, it's gonna be another front building for that road, well, it really is already currently another side of the front of the building, but.
So, not a detail.
You could bring a materials board, so we could see better, what those materials actually are.
Yeah, we do have the materials in order, for the, the, and the rest of the utility group.
Okay, great. And then, in terms of like, the front and the back elevations on the main side, just adding some additional, a little bit more detail to the.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
I don't know if these corners, or these, you know, maybe there's some kind of a detail around where the sign goes, just to give it some relief, there's just a lot of massing correction, just something to break it up and soften it a little bit, I think would be a good idea. But I think, outside of the architectural comments, I think the main one would be to advise you guys to look into flipping the entire site.
Yes, I have that.
Because I think that could really get you closer to the street from the building, and I think that would look a lot better, because I've got to imagine, based on other pay canopies that I've seen, they're not that attractive, and I think having that right out the main road isn't gonna be, isn't something that would look on the sheet.
If I could, just, the landscaping plan, so as we put landscaping along State Route Eight, we're gonna be screening, so that's the other thing, that we were asked to put more, you know, plant materials, and you can see on page LS1, we're, we're gonna be putting in, plant material will have the columns with the right iron fence, so it'll be the separation, and, you know, partly screening, from whatever is, whatever the depth is of the, this power wash tunnel, where the canopy's located, whether it's on the west side or the east side, regardless, it's just gonna be, it's gonna be screening that's gonna be taking place on State Route Eight, so, I don't know.
It's not gonna completely block everything, though, and I think getting the building up closer to the street would be more attractive than what's, what you're currently showing there right now. I think it'll help front the building, going to Mr. Bron's comment, to, to really give that building some more presence, and then kind of complete that corridor right there, because I don't think having that on the front is, is ideal.
In terms of landscaping, I, I don't, I don't necessarily wanna see you screen the building, I think, you know, I'd like to see you make the building look really nice, if you could get it closer to Route Eight, that would be great, and be able to see it, let the landscaping be decorative, accent, but make it a building that you wanna see, it's not the back of the store that we were talking about before, that was, thankfully, it's covered, it's screened, you know, this would be, you know, get this building looking really good, and you go, we want people to see it, so. Yeah, I, I think several have thought about flipping it, that that would be a real opportunity to get it closer, and still be able to maintain flow around the buildings, since you're only got one way.
If I could, just two things, we'll, we'll get feasibility, and that, just, just the engineering of it, and then our client also, we have to take it back to my middle-of-the-wash homes, and then that's will be something that hopefully, you know, they'll come, come up with an ethical resolution, whether it's flipping the building, and getting that massing proposed to State Route Eight, see what we can do, trying to accommodate your concerns.
Mr. Schrom?
Good question.
Is there any other, any other comments?
I was just gonna say, so, that goes to my item number one, and during our telephone call, I'd like to see the design alternatives that led you to this point, and that is an option of flipping it completely and adjusting the site around, that there, they must have done those sketches early on, and that's, I would like to see those. those.
Yeah, I mean, if there's concerns about, you know, I was thinking, you know, flipping it is going to put your, your driveway into your part of the site off of the shared driveway a little closer to the connector street, you know, if you know what I'm saying? Right now, you've got to push closer to Route 8, a little pusher closer to that intersection of connector street. But again, kind of like the traffic study, you guys aren't putting out a lot of traffic. I'm not so concerned that you're going to have a traffic jam at that intersection if the driveway is over there. I mean, you want to have enough room to queue some cars, but it looks like you've got double lane at the pay station. You still should be able to stack six, seven, eight cars before we reach out and still block anything in KFC. Or you could do it, and possibly in a way where you come in right where you've got it, even, even, you know, still come in here, but, but go around this way. Of course, you'd have to have double legs. That might be a little confusing, but there, there's got to be some options, either they looked at or they couldn't. So, friends, so what do you, yeah, and there's clearly, there's, there's issues here, I don't think, you know, definitely, and I'll say, do you suggest a plan or are you suggestions tabling to deal with these issues?
So, well, I think the, the biggest issue is the site layout, right? And flipping it and taking a look at what the design alternatives are?
Yeah.
Architecturally, I mean, most of the, the items I think are pretty minor at this point, although I'm, I really didn't understand that wasn't an overhead door facing south, so I, for some reason, thought that was a door as well, and so I would, I would say that needs to be eliminated. It doesn't make any design sense on that, that western end of the building. You know, it's a, it's a principal primitive use. I don't think there's going to be a denial that would come out of the commission. It's a use that's allowed by right. It's really working through the site dynamics and the architecture, so I think a preliminary approval with this, this is a great conversation to have tonight, with the understanding that we want to see those design alternatives and, and see what the final architectural layout will be before we issue a final approval, if the commission's okay with that.
Yeah.
It's kind of like a preliminary conceptual under our code, just giving them the nod to move forward, study it, bring it back, and I don't think there's a showstopper, but I think we need to look at it more thoroughly.
Does anybody want to make a motion?
Kevin, you should do that.
And if someone likes to brag, I think you just say has...
You got it right on the tip of your tongue, Kevin.
Make a motion for preliminary plan approval, with the plans coming back to deal with final site plan and architectural issues and to see alternatives. That's it.
Site alternatives.
Second, all right, any more discussion on this? Susan, would you, when you're done writing?
Mr. Westbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, I'll get the confirmation I said that, that was, we'll come through next week, okay?
Thank you. I should be here for one miscellaneous tonight. Last meeting of the year, we usually forget, excuse the first meeting, we need to elect Chairman and Vice Chairman. If anybody wants to.
I think we can make new chairman and Joe Vice Chairman for one more year.
Before you say that, if anyone would like to be Vice Chairman, I, please feel free to state that. Everybody jumped for once.
Hey, Joe, you're not getting out of it. Good try.
You did a good job.
I was going to say, because the pay increase, you know, it does increase.
That was a slick way, Mr. Sheehan, but it failed.
All right, so there's a nomination, a second, all fair. All right, thanks.